This regular meeting with the Detroit Lake City Council is called to order and at this time I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The regular agenda is before the council and I would entertain a motion for its approval. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is it made a second to approve the regular agenda as printed?
Mayor, may I interject?
Yes.
Can we respectfully add two items to under the liquor and gambling?
Yes, is that okay with the motion during the second here? Okay, so we'll do it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from or to the consent agenda?
Remove item six and.
Six what?
Yeah.
Any others? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item six and.
So moved.
Seconded.
Which has been made seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 13th, 2024 are before the council. Is there any member of the audience or anyone in the council that wishes to make any changes or corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 13th, 2024. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call on Cleone Stewart from the Tourism Bureau, which would like to give the council an update on our lodging tax in the area of Detroit Lakes. And also we have Doug Anselman, who's going off the Tourism Bureau. Good to see you.
Nice to be here.
Well, thank you. I am Cleone Stewart. I'm the Tourism Director with the Detroit Lakes Tourism Bureau and...
Doug Anselman, General Manager of the Detroit Lakes Holiday Inn. I've been served nine years on the Tourism Bureau, headed it off in good hands.
So Cleone, before you start, I have something I want to give to Doug.
Go.
Third one.
It's not a check.
I will read it for the audience. Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Doug Anselman, served in the Tourism Bureau for nine years from 2015 through 2024, in recognition of nine years of valuable contributions to the city of Detroit Lakes. Thank you, Doug.
(applause).
Hey, sir. You've had?
Appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to give an update. Some of you might not be too familiar with what the Tourism Bureau Board really even does, so the Tourism Bureau is an arm in the city with a board of directors, so we have an ad agency that also helps us decide where to place advertising to get people to come and stay overnight in Detroit Lakes. So what are we governed by? In 1972, the Minnesota had a statute that is very similar to what the city of Detroit Lakes in 1990 has in ordinance, and it says that the lodging tax shall be used by the city to fund a local convention or tourism bureau for the purpose of marketing and promoting the city or town as a tourist or convention center. So what's a tourist? In our industry, it's someone that lives at least 50 miles away and is traveling for an overnight trip, so we don't advertise locally. The lodging tax is 3% on any city property for stays of 30 days or less. So right now, we have two campgrounds, nine hotels, and at the end of last year, we had 16 vacation homes collecting lodging tax. A good reference is in the visitor guide, this page, the Tourism Bureau has taken out an ad and you can see who those lodging properties are. So why is promoting Detroit Lakes important? People have lots of choices where they can vacation, where they can stay while they're on business, where they can hold a meeting or a wedding. So the halo... Oh, question? Oh. The halo effect is tourism advertising inspires people to visit the destination and thereby they have a more favorable view of the destination. And tourism is the front door to economic development, since once they visit, they view the location as favorable to live, work, and/or start a business. So the lodging tax in Detroit Lakes started in 1990 at 1%, and we took in $23,640. In 1992, it was raised to 2% lodging tax and we took in $55,000, almost $600. And in 1994, it was raised to 3%, and we took in $84,729. So right now, 3% is the max you can charge. However, if you go to the cities or Rochester, Duluth, you say, well, I'm paying a whole lot more than that. So some of these locations, these metro areas, had a lodging tax before the state instituted it in 1972, so they got grandfathered in. We hit a milestone in 2022 of over 300,000 in lodging taxes. And last year, we took in $316,739 in lodging taxes. So if you divide that by the lodging tax, that's over 10 and a half million that was spent at just city lodging properties. So that's a huge impact in the city. So for this year, we're going to spend over $200,000 in advertising. More than 70% of that will be digital, plus we do website updates. Every year, we get the pros in to do videos, photography, and last year, the Tourism Bureau Board decided to help event organizers with their advertising out of the area and provided $24,000 to help them. Last year, we had over 350,000 visits to visit detroitlakes.com. One month, one of our Facebook posts had a reach of over 233,000, so that means at least people saw it at least once. So maybe shared it, and they shared it, so 233,000. We had a Facebook ad, was just in February, I believe. Most of the time, cost per click, so when they click on it, you allocate a certain amount, and if you can get a dollar or less a click is good. It was such a good ad that it was 12 cents a click. So the Tourism Bureau Board is governed by five members, three from lodging, one city and one chamber. So Tony Schmitz is with Detroit Mountain, Mark Birkie is with We Best, Mike Larson has a vacation home in Outlet Rec, Jesse Krueger is with JLJ Management, which is Country Inn and American, and Doug Anselman is with the only full-service lodging property in town, the Holiday Inn. So any questions? That's my brief update.
Okay, any questions for Cleone?
Cleone, how could people find you? Where's your office at?
It's in the Timber Building.
Any other questions? We appreciate the report, Cleone. Thank you, and thank you for coming, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item B. Ron?
Item B is for Richard Cole of Jack LeVar for the Core Admirals of the Water Carnival and they're here today. Maybe we should have them come up and say a few words to them after that. Well, I can't motion for that.
Hello, guys. Thanks for having us. I don't really have much to add, just wanted to thank all you guys for your continued support to make this great event possible for our community.
So, any questions we have for the admirals? And all the permits and everything, Sean and Kelsey and Gary, we're all appreciative. Okay, well, we appreciate you guys running a tremendous event and we love having it at Detroit Lakes, so.
I'm happy to let you agenda. You've got lots of things going on.
We do.
So I know you have lots of J.C.'s to help you with that, too, but we're happy to see both of you here and to step up and to do that big job, because it takes a year and a half to plan anything to make it all happen. But at this time, I'd like to give the request for the Water Carnival 2024 consideration to approval of temporary on sale of intoxicated liquor, eight 3.2 liquor licenses, two parade per facility and ground using in the city park, pavilion, and city each, along with street closures and extended carreter use as per the J.C.'s request, and we'll do everything we can to try to help you and make this a great event successfully. Committee recommends ISO move.
Seconded. Which has been made seconded to give approval to all the requests from the J.C.'s for the Water Carnival for this summer. Discussion?
One thing, Mayor, you have to point out, thank you, guys. You guys do a tremendous job. At one point, there was three past admirals. I think I'm the only one left up here, but what you guys do for the city is phenomenal. If anybody, I'm guessing you're always accepting members?
We are.
Okay, I think most of us up here probably just aged out, but it is a great thing, and I encourage anybody that's new to town, that's looking to get plugged in, look up the J.C.'s. It's fantastic. Some of my best friends, closest friends are still from the J.C.'s, so great job for what you do, and thank you for keeping it going.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Ron, without objection, can we do six and now?
Yes. Six and, of that's consideration to a special event application for the Minnesota Flyers and for their color dash event on June 8th. And I'm going to have the reason question, we had some things that Sean wanted to make sure that we had cleared up on that. So Sean, want to give us a little update on that?
Yes, Mayor and Council, John did reach out to Carissa today, and we did get a map showing all the color locations where they will be throwing the color, and they do have a cleanup plan for that, so I think we should be good to go.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make motion for consideration for a special event application for the Minnesota Flyers for the color dash event on June 8th, 2024. Committee recommends ISO move.
Seconded. Motion's been made seconded to approve a special event application for the Minnesota Flyers for June 8th, 2024. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the matter of an annexation of a 12-acre tract of land, more or less in Burlington Township, and zoning the tract B3 Auto Oriented Business District, and the address is 29075 US Highway 10 and 14249 290th Avenue. The mayor is not here, Kelsey?
Mayor and Council, yes, so the public hearing is pursuant to an annexation request that was received from the property owners. In this case, we actually have a petition signed by both the current property owner and potential buyer of the property, which is quality equipment. They are proposing a 15,000 square foot equipment sales business there at that site. The property is already zoned commercial by the county, and as the mayor mentioned, the request with the annexation is to rezone that to B3, which is our highway commercial district within the city. Again, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, we have a petition of 100% of the property owners. We can do an annexation by ordinance, so the action tonight after the public hearing would be consideration to the first reading of the ordinance and then the second reading will come subsequently.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wishes to make a comment regarding that annexation? Paul?
And would you come up? Paul, will you give us your name and address for our minutes?
Yep. Good evening. I'm Paul Renner, 13963 290th Avenue. The adjacent property owner and quality equipment, I think, is a good fit for this piece of property. I wish the guys well. My concern with this is you're annexing that 12 acre parcel. All of a sudden, now I'm sitting in the middle there, which I would be county yet, and I'm going to be an island. And what I'm looking for from the council tonight is some reassurance here that I'm not going to be annexed, you know? And I get it that I'm not being annexed here tonight or so forth, but I'd like some reassurance that I'm not going to be annexed here in the next year or two years down the road. I just specifically built a brand-new house there, and it's in the county, and that's kind of where I want to be. What's your thoughts, Ron? You got something?
Well, you know how growth in the city goes, and if you're right on the edge of now, which will be a new business district for you, and part of the reason they wanted to be in the city is because they needed city water and sewer.
Correct. And I get that, and they probably are looking for some TIF financing and so forth, and that's important to a business when they start up and so forth. But like I say, my property there is all of a sudden now an island, and I want to remain county.
You know, it's tough to give a guarantee for that, Paul, but I wish we could do that, but we don't know how the growth is going to go with the city. Part of that is annexation. We start surrounding your property, so that just goes along with it. We just can't give you a guarantee that we're not going to annex that area, because we just don't know what the future's going to bring.
Yeah, well, it's like, I don't quite understand, though, you know, it's just because one individual wants the city water and sewer and maybe some TIF financing and so forth, and all of a sudden, that doesn't fit with what, you know, my property is and what I want to do, you know? So I'm not looking to be annexed in any way.
I would say, Paul, that that'd be almost impossible to give you a guarantee, because we would have other people wanting to do the same thing, you know, down the road five, 10, 20 years from now, that we don't want to be in the annexation. But like I said, if you are surrounded, an annexation would take place.
Well, we'll have to rethink this situation.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Paul. Does anyone else want to make any comments or have any questions about the annexation? If not, that hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion this time.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to consider the first reading of ordinance 522 for the annexation of 12 acres of tract of land, more or less Burlington Township, zoning the tract B3 Auto Orientated Business at 29075 US Highway 10 as well as 14249 290th Avenue. And I would move that forward.
Is there a second?
No, seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to give first reading to the annexation that was just described in the motion. Is there a discussion by the council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries and first reading is given to the 12-acre annexation. The second reading will be on the next month's agenda. Is there anyone else in the audience that has an item that I can move up on the agenda? So you don't have to sit here all night? But you can if you want to. Okay, we're at the Community Developmental Committee Chairman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5A, consideration for resolution approving a non-conforming use expansion permit to allow an addition to an attached garage which has seven-foot side yard setbacks instead of the required 10-feet setback at 1026 Westlake Drive. This is an existing garage they're adding on to, and actually, the closest point will be seven feet. As you get to the back addition, it fans out to nine feet. This was discussed yesterday at CDC with a unanimous decision. Move this forward.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution approving a non-conforming use expansion permit at 1026 Westlake Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 5B, consideration to a resolution approving an amended variance request from the parking requirements and to change the impervious surface coverage from 61.01% to 58.45% and to allow 1440 square foot covered open air deck and conversion of an 1,840 square foot deck from impervious to pervious at 401 Westlake Drive, a business known as Zorbas. This was discussed at CDC with unanimous recommendation and ISO move.
Seconded. Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution approving an amended variance request for parking and also impervious service coverage at 402 Westlake Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5C, consideration to a resolution of annexation by order pursuant to Minnesota statute 414.031. I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Ramstead to kind of fill us in on this one, please.
Mayor and Council, this is a proposed resolution for annexation of a piece of property that's approximately 76.9 acres. It lies southerly of South Shore Drive and westerly of Timber Creek, so westerly of the new South Shore Park.
Westerly of Lake Forest. Lake Forest addition.
Excuse me, not Timber Creek. Thinking Timber Creek, because Paul was here. So Lake Forest, excuse me, and westerly of the new South Shore Park, westerly of 270th Avenue, south of South Shore Drive. The property is owned by Garrick Properties LLC. The council probably recalls that last year, I believe it was, there was a petition from Garrick for annexation. Garrick laid out very well the reasons for or why this piece of property was appropriate for annexation, but Garrick wanted a particular type of zoning for the property, and the council was not willing to adopt that type of zoning, and so Garrick withdrew the request for annexation at that point in time. The property is sitting out there now. It is being listed for sale as a commercial and residential development area, and from a planning perspective, staff feels that it's appropriate for the city to consider annexation of this property, to bring it into the city so that city zoning and city development controls can affect, and basically to allow the city to have input into the development of the property. The council is aware, the city no longer has what we used to call the two-mile zone or the ability to control development within two miles of the city's boundaries, and so it leaves the city in order to have a voice in development of the property with really no alternative but to petition for annexation. This particular petition is different than what you just did with regard to that 12-acre piece of property. This cannot be done. We do not have the petition of the landowner. We don't have a joint petition with Lakeview Township, so the statutes provide a method by which the annexation can occur by what is called order. Order means order of a Department of Hearings voluntary adjustment unit, which is a state agency that would eventually hear the merits of it and decide whether or not the city gets to annex. So we don't get to just pass an ordinance to annex this piece of property, and what the resolution before the council is, is the initiating of that process. So the process would be that they're, assuming that the council adopts the resolution tonight, there would be a notice of annexation that would go out to a number of parties, the landowner, obviously, Lakeview Township, as well as Becker County. That has to sit out for 30 days, and then we file it with the state agency in regard to this, and they set hearings, so there's a potential hearing. It's a fairly long process, typically takes months, if not longer, to complete, and in that meantime, there may be discussions or there are going to be required to be discussions between the landowner, the township, and the city, potentially a mediation process. So we may end up resolving this by some agreement, but eventually, if it doesn't resolve by agreement, then the decision is issued by the state agency that does final adjustments. And so the request for action today is adoption of this resolution so we can get that process going. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions or anything you want to add, Kelsey? I'm sorry, Ron. Anything you want to add?
No, I know. The resolution does spell out some of the findings, I think, that are helpful. Anyone's had a chance to read through in the House.
Ron, the one thing Mr. Ramstead, I wanted, just for the neighbors around, because there's a lot of concern how this is going to result, this is just taking care of annexation as nothing new, zoning until later date on it.
That's correct. So under this process, and again, like in the last process to concentrate, we adopted a first reading of an ordinance that would annex and zone that piece of property. But in this situation, since we're not doing it by order, can't just, we can't, excuse me, by ordinance, the city has no power to zone this property until and unless it's annexed, and the annexation order comes from the state. Typically, I believe the city has annexed property and brought it in as an agricultural zone. The property currently is in an agricultural zone, although it's surrounded by residential to the north, residential to the east, and commercial to the south, but it still is zoned agriculture by the city, or by the, it is zoned agricultural by the county and would presumably come in as agricultural by the city, and at that point in time, the city would have the authority to rezone the property. There's one caveat to that. I think the council may be aware that Becker County issued a conditional use permit, so didn't rezone it, but issued a conditional use permit to allow the convenience store gas station facility that was somewhat controversial. That conditional use permit is in effect, and if the annexation were to be approved, the city would take the property subject to that conditional use permit. In other words, if the landowner utilizes that permit, we would not be able to prevent the landowner from doing that, provided that the landowner complied with the permit issued by the county.
Further questions for Mr. Ramstead? If not, I would entertain a motion for a resolution for annexation by order.
This was discussed last night at CDC, and we moved it forward with unanimous recommendation.
Seconded. Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution for annexation by order pursuant to Minnesota statutes, and the tax ID number is 190296000. Discussion on the motion?
The one thing to point out, just so everybody's clear, that we discussed last night at CDC and Mr. Ramstead pointed out, that this process could take six, eight, 12, 18 months, unfortunately. During that time, the landowner, the county, the township still has control of this and could do whatever they want with it. So just because we've started this doesn't mean we have absolute control over it until that time is set. So just so everybody's aware of that.
Didn't we have a date though that that decree ends on September 19, 2025?
Chairman, the existing conditional use permit issued by Becker County has an expiration date on it, so one of the conditions is that this, the conditional use permit shall become null and void on September 19, 2025, if the use granted has not been implemented by that date. We do that also with our conditional use permits. You don't have them sitting out there forever, and so, yes, the landowner would have until that date to implement the conditions of, in other words, build the gas station, follow the conditions of the conditional use permit. If they don't, it expires. And at that point, it would be agricultural in zone property and in the process of the annexation.
Thank you. Okay, anything further on this matter? Want to call the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
That is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll move to the public works. Community Chairman Zeman.
Okay, the first item A is for discussion concerning the use of native platties for restoration along a portion of some of the avenue remaining from the DLCC and the new museum. I'm going to have John Praticulus a little reveal of that.
Mayor and Council, Kelsey can chime in on this as well, but we had a request from the DLCC.
the DLCC and museum properties to consider the use of native planting type restoration, sort of in conjunction with the Summit Avenue project. We haven't done this turf establishment yet. They received a grant from the Watershed District, I believe, to do something similar within the property on some of the islands, within the parking lot and things like that, under the notion that, you know, this type of restoration, you know, survives and does a little bit better than, you know, turf grasses without irrigation and things like that. So simply stated, they're asking if we as a city would consider doing the same in sort of the boulevard spaces on the portion of property adjacent to the museum and the chamber. So basically a two block area from, would that be Home Street to State Street on the west side of Summit Avenue is where we would be looking at. So something a little bit out of the ordinary. We, I can't say that we've done a lot of this on a street restoration project. Public Works has done some of this around some of the stormwater treatment basins and things like that. But we wanted to get the council's approval to move ahead with this type of a project. Any questions?
Any questions for John? Sounds like a good plan to me. Ron?
Okay, we did have, like I said, discussion on it, but then when John was talking about this, you know, the contractors are gonna be doing this work for us. If we're gonna go ahead and do it, these native plantings, they've got to change their plans, how they're gonna, what they're gonna have to order and so forth. So at this time, we pretty much agree that we're gonna go ahead and make the recommendation that we go ahead with the native plantings and restoration of this portion of Summit Avenue.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the use of native plantings for restoration along a portion of Summit Avenue. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, next item B, consideration to accepting bids for the two thousand twenty-four street rehab project and Willow Springs Street Improvement Project, awarding the contracts. I'm gonna call on John to give us an update on that.
Mayor and Council, we took bids on what we're now calling the twenty-four street rehabilitation project. Just rewinding here to get everybody up to speed, this is the same project that we took bids on last summer. We received only one bid. We deemed it to be quite high, rejected the bids, and sort of repackage the project with the hopes of getting better numbers. We only got one bid again from the same contractor, but fortunately, this time, the numbers were significantly better. Well below estimate, maybe to try to frame this up just a little bit, we added roughly a million dollars worth of work, give or take. Bid last year came in at about three million four hundred and fifty thousand. The new bid came in at three million two hundred and eighty-six thousand. So the bid came in cheaper despite us adding roughly a million dollars worth of additional work. So all in all, the best way I could phrase it is prices came in about twenty-five percent lower than what we received last summer. So of course, our recommendation is to award the contract Mark Santigrabel, including both of the alternates that we included in the bid.
And John, some of these streets are in pretty tough shape, are they not?
Some of them are beyond tough shape, yes.
Okay, any questions by the council for city engineer?
Could maybe have, John, just give us a little review as far as how that's gonna help all Willow Springs by waiting to have extra span time, what's gonna take it down versus what it was here six months ago.
So Alderman Zeeman, and to remind everybody, we included Willow Springs, which is sort of a parallel project, but we've packaged it with this project under one contract. Willow Springs, at the time that we've had our public hearings in terms of what we've told residents out there, we were telling them about an assessment rate of about seventy-six dollars per front foot is what we were expecting. Based on the ASBIT numbers, that's gonna go from seventy-six down to about sixty-two dollars front foot. So a pretty decent savings in terms of the impact to the property owner.
Okay.
Okay, the committee recommends that's with the new bids, ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to accept the bid for the two thousand and twenty-four street rehab project and the Willow Springs Street Improvement Project and awarding the contract to Mark Santigrabel. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Next item B, considering the approval of the summer ice agreement with Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Program, I'm gonna call on Sean to give us an update on that.
Yes, Mayor and Council, so this is the agreement. I've been working with youth hockey. So they will be putting ice in and start skating July fifteenth through August twenty-ninth from eight AM to four thirty PM. And then again, September third through October tenth, Monday through Thursday, four PM to nine PM, before going into their regular season, October fourteenth. I know Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey did have a meeting last night and they approved it and signed the contract.
Okay.
Okay, the committee recommends approval of this, an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the summer ice agreement with the Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Association. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Next item B, consideration to approving the dock license for J.K. Green. Who was to take this one? That's basically what it is, is approving the hundred and two slips that they had before and also those side docks that we had in front that we discussed last year and also this year. The committee recommends that we go ahead with the approval for this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, next item E, consideration to a resolution accepting a report and setting a public hearing on the improvement of concrete, the two minutes curved gutters approaches and sidewalks for April ninth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. The committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution accepting a report and setting a public hearing for April ninth, council meeting for concrete, the two minutes curved gutters approaches and sidewalks. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, next item is that, consideration to issue a transient merchant license to Rick Green for the year of two thousand twenty-four. Kelsey, you wanna give us an update on that?
Yes, Mayor and Council, Rick Green is proposing to have a food truck kind of part of Walmart, the old Glacier Bay, like the ice cream shop there. He's renting out the ice cream shop, so he's gonna use that building for the restroom and water and those type of facilities. And then his food truck will be stationed out front. So we reviewed the application at Public Works yesterday. Staff recommendation is approval of the transient merchant license, is subject to all necessary paperwork and fees.
Okay.
Okay, and as Kelsey says, contingent on all paperwork being turned in, Rick for the summer season, committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to issue a transient merchant license to Rick Green for two thousand twenty-four, subject to certain conditions. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the last item was consideration to accepting the city engineer month of the port with the nice weather, I imagine, John, we're gonna get things going maybe a little earlier on.
That could be a possibility. So Mayor and Council, just a few updates, really nothing to report on Campbell Avenue, Linden Lane, Summit Avenue, other than, as Alderman Zeeman indicated, the unseasonable weather might launch, he said, the construction a little bit quicker this year. We already talked about the street rehab project in Willow Springs, so those projects are awarded. Update the council once I know more from the contractor on their schedule as to when they want to start those, but it'll be sometime this summer and that's about the best I can tell you right now. Outside of that, West Downtown Project, we have completed the design on that, just waiting for some signatures from MinDOT. And we are advertising the project and planning on opening those bids April fourth and we'll be bringing those to the city council at the April city council meeting for consideration for award. Outside of that, we're making progress, continue to make progress on the new water tower. Had some discussion on that at Public Utilities this morning. Right now, the goal or the schedule would be to get Public Utilities approval on that project and authorization of bid next month, which I mean would also come to city council for your approval and authorization at the April meeting. And then we will get it up for bids and go from there.
Questions?
Do we know what it's gonna look like?
We're getting closer.
Okay.
So next month, I think we'll have some pictures and things like that.
I suppose, or even bid it, you gotta have a concept or?
We do. We do. We're getting closer.
Questions for John?
No questions for me.
Mr. Pratt, seeing that we just approved that street rehabilitation for twenty-four, is it concerning that there's only one contractor bidding on that?
Fair question. Yes, I mean, I wasn't real happy that we only had one bid with the expectation that we rejected them to get more bids. The other contractor that I would have certainly expected to bid didn't reach out about a day after the bid and apologized. They more or less screwed up and missed the bid or had it confused with another bid because they were not happy that they didn't get a chance at it. So I was a little surprised that we didn't have some other contractors, especially with a project of that size. So that was a little bit concerning to me from that angle. That said, the numbers are very good. The difference being this time, the bidder did not know that they were gonna be the only bidder.
Gotcha. Second question, I know you alluded to kind of the spring, and I know Ron mentioned the weather getting moving there. One of the big things to get moving is kind of road restrictions. Have you heard anything from MinDOT? Hear that, Mr. King?
I mean, road restrictions are on right now. They're starting to bleed their way off as you move south, north.
Actually, the road restriction that I saw on the website just went into effect yesterday.
Okay.
So, and I don't know how long they stay in effect for.
It's almost like clockwork, no matter what, they're usually on for at least a month, if not about a month and a half. I would expect they will come off sooner because they went on sooner, but they're on. It'll just depend on how warm it stays consistent.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to approve the report.
Yeah, make the motion, go ahead, accept the city engineer's report.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the city engineer's monthly status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The rest is on the second. Okay, we'll go to the Finance Committee, Chairman Josephson.
Item A is about the proposed library sign. Kelsey, you wanna give us a synopsis of this?
Mayor and Council, here packet, there's a kind of chronological order of discussion about the sign. At one point, they were looking at doing a digital sign, that reviewed by the state Historic Preservation Office. But they declined that request to do a digital sign, so they recommend maybe making some other changes to the existing sign, trying to do some uplighting and such. The foundation has worked with a donor who's gonna be paying for this, so this is not taking any city funds to do it. There's a mock-up in the packet that shows what they're proposing to do, basically looking at raising the existing sign by twenty-four inches and adding some additional graphic and language to the sign. So the action item for the council is just to approve the project since it is on city property.
So with that being said, item A is consideration to approving the sign project for the library. Finance committee reviewed this this afternoon and recommends approval, an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the sign project for the library. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item B, Heidi, you wanna take this one?
I'll bring up the, I'm sorry. Sure, so item B is consideration to a resolution to, for the city to reimburse itself for costs related to a new tea hanger project out at the airport. What this does is basically gives the city slash the county, since it's jointly owned airport, the ability to incur expenditures related to this project of building two new six-unit tea hangers, so then we can eventually reimburse ourselves through the proceeds of bonds. And then those bonds will likely come forward with some further resolutions in coming meetings for both the county board and the council's consideration.
Mayor, I just add, I emailed out a separate memo today that I missed, I didn't get in the packet. I sent that same memo to the county, I think the county's gonna have it in their agenda for next week. Again, looking at building those two six-unit tea hangers out at the airport, be funded through existing hangar rents and the new hangar rents would be the revenue source for that. Again, we're looking at probably a local placement for the financing. So this action would be, again, it's a reimbursement resolution and then probably next month, you'll have another resolution that actually authorizes the financing.
I'm thinking so, tell me next month?
Well, the memo just explains the project a little bit.
All right. So with that being said, consideration to a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the tax exempt bonds or other obligations to be issued by the city for the new tea hanger project at the airport. The finance committee reviewed this this afternoon, recommends approval, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from bonds eventually for the tea hanger project at the airport. Discussion?
I guess a couple of things, I think the project's about one point three million dollars shared between the city and the county and the possibly replaced by rent from the hangars, so it's no obligation of the city or the county.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item C, Heidi, you wanna talk about the transfers?
Sure, so the resolution before you is a resolution approving fund transfers. All fund transfers need to be approved by the city council per state statute, so it's something our auditors will look at when they do our annual audit. What these do, there are a couple of fund transfers that just clean up some errors that had been done previously and then others that simply are done to close some old funds for some paid off bonds that we were able to pay off on schedule in two thousand twenty-three. So just closing out those old funds into our permanent improvement revolving fund.
So item C, Heidi out, is consideration to a resolution approving fund transfers. Finance committee recommends approval, an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving fund transfers. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything further? We're gonna move to the Public Safety Committee. Chairwoman Sprague.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is item A, consideration to approving the request from the Ogama Fire Department to purchase engine number three. I don't see Chief Hansen, did I just talk a little bit about that?
I'm assuming there's a fire call, I can try to film that a little bit. Yeah, Mayor and Council, so this fire truck is being replaced here, hopefully by, maybe by the end of the year, I think they'll take delivery on it. So we actually advertised it for a number of weeks, didn't get any bids on it. Again, might make sure all the local fire chiefs were aware that we had it for sale and we did get a proposal from Ogama for seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a little bit less than, you know, we were hoping, I mean, I think we were hoping for more like a hundred thousand dollar price range, but obviously, when we had advertised, we didn't have any takers on it. So I think his recommendation was to accept this offer from Ogama. Of course, we do mutual aid with them, so it is kind of nice to have the truck stay close to home and we know how it operates and those type of things. So that'd be the recommendation.
Okay.
Oh, it would be, they won't get the truck actually until they actually take delivery of the other trucks, so.
Someone's recommending?
All right, so we discussed this last night at the Public Safety Committee, and as a group, we are recommending that the council approve the request around the Ogama Fire Department to purchase engine three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the request from the Ogama Fire Department to purchase engine number three. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else?
Okay.
And the Liquor and gambling control committee is gonna be chaired by Elder Woman Jack.
Thank you, Mayor. In considering matter nine A, consideration to the request from downtown Alana- In considering matter nine A, consideration to the request from Downtown Alive to sponsor the downtown floral baskets for two thousand twenty-four, the committee discussed and recommends a sponsorship at the four thousand dollar level similar to last year, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request of Downtown Alive to sponsor the downtown floral baskets for two thousand twenty-four. Discussion? I didn't approve that picture on that flyer either.
Maybe you had all sorts of stuff to do with it.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Can I assume that people still don't make five hundred dollars on that half, correct?
No. That's a great, that's a great project.
In consideration for nine B, the second reading and adoption of ordinance five two one, amending section seven oh two liquor and wine licensing of the city code. Council, do you have anything to add there?
No, mayor and council, we kind of reviewed this in more detail last month. A lot of the changes are just update our city ordinance to make it consistent with state statute.
And we're back.
One provision that we did talk about more last month was the seven oh two point one three proposal about hours and days of sales. That's not something required by statute, but it was actually a request we received from one of the licenses about having a cutoff period about how long people can drink in establishment after hours, and it was approved in the first reading, so that again, it's here in the second reading. And I'm just going to add one more thing that I forgot to mention at liquor and gambling. We do have two action items related to this ordinance. So there's the approval of the second reading, and then B one is an approval of the summary of the ordinance that just saves us some publication cost. That does require four fiscal order of the entire council, so there'd be two action items. One would be approved in the second reading, and the other one would be approved in the summary.
So did you already make a motion?
No, I did not. I'm, in the consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance five two one, amending section seven two liquor and wine licensing of the city code, committee recommends approval and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance five twenty-one, amending the section seven oh two liquor and wine licensing. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and second reading is given. Ordinance five twenty-one is adopted.
For item nine B one, consideration to approving the summary of ordinance five two one, amending section seven oh two liquor and wine licensing, the committee discussed and I recommend approval.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the summary of ordinance five twenty-one, amending section seven oh two liquor and wine licensing. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And mayor, I have some more items. I do. We have received an application and to permit for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license to the Detroit Lakes J.C.'s on April fifth for one of their events, Craft Beer Festival. It is going to be at the Kent Freeman Arena. The committee discussed and agreed to move to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request from the Detroit Lakes J.C.'s for, what is it, the beer festival?
Craft Beer Festival.
Craft Beer Festival on April fifth.
Yep.
At the Kent Freeman Arena. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And one more request from the Detroit Lakes J.C.'s for an event on April thirteenth. This is a bingo event at the Detroit Lakes Armory. The committee discussed and recommends approval.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a application from the Detroit Lakes J.C.'s for April thirteenth for a raffle, was it?
Bingo.
Bingo at the Detroit Lakes Armory. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else, Jackie?
No, that would be, no, thank you.
Renell, anything from Public Utilities that needs to be discussed? Mike, maybe?
Not for Mr. Mayor. I think I maybe have somebody that's going to go on the fire gymnastics board, and I'll let you know next month. Kim Betcher has completed her third term on the park board and is ineligible to be reappointed, so if you have any ideas for me on a new park board member, I would appreciate hearing from you. I would recommend to the council that we reappoint Tony Schmitz to the tourism bureau for another term, and that would entertain a motion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Tony Schmitz to the tourism bureau. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I would also recommend to the council that we appoint Tim Westbrook to the tourism bureau to replace Doug Anselman, who's turbed out as well.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Tim Westbrook to the tourism bureau. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And also, I would recommend to the council that we appoint Dale Thompson to the Public Utilities Commission. He would replace Jill Tucker, who has completed his third term, and that would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Dale Thompson to the Public Utilities Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Some announcements, the Becker County assessor has notified the city that the border review will be held April thirtieth at nine thirty. So we've got myself, Alderman Josephson, Alderman Zeeman, Alderman Wookiee. Are you good to go with that, Edes?
Yes.
Not really giving you a choice. So, no action there. The joint governance meetings are listed on the agenda, as well as the balance of the council meetings. We're going to continue to meet here at the courthouse until we get into our new digs, hopefully sometime mid-year or so. Anything further from city staff?
Well, I just want to say that, council, I came back from the Little Minnesota Cities meeting in St. Paul, and one of the big items statewide is the talk about housing. Everybody's sharp, of course, housing, when we come housing, housing is a big issue, and try to figure out how we can grow our cities, and we need to find housing so we can do that.
Sounds good, man. Jackie?
A big thank you to the Parks District. You guys have done a tremendous job plowing snow this year and keeping up on that, so thank you.
I never got one phone call, Sean. Mike, Sean, Jay, the business of this council has come to a conclusion, and the meeting's adjourned.